And likewise, we'll be in the, uh, Fox, the joint meeting of the city council with the library board at 6:32. And the sort of business will be our, the city public, so we do have some comment cards. Uh, I have four. Everybody had an opportunity to fill one out and make any comments in tonight. Okay, with that, um, I'm going to get started. Christberg, you okay to get started?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, Patricia.
Good evening. Patricia Edred, 115 South Main. I hope everyone has my little cheat sheet because it's helpful, uh, funded from the Friends of the Library, because let's put them to speak on tonight. Because I am a member of the Friends, not an officer, not a hardworking dedicated volunteer, but a member of the Friends. And so I'm so pleased all of y'all are here tonight because as we go walking and touring the library, I want us to see the Makerspace. Without the Friends, there would be no Makerspace for us to look at tonight. In 2017, 2018, 2019, 2020, the Friends individually funded items that the library asked for. Unfortunately, we didn't, and called out on your sheet there, we didn't necessarily see those items through those dates. But they're now, we'll be seeing them in the Makerspace in 2025. So the question is, where were those items? Okay, the sewing machines were had a few Saturday afternoon classes back pre-COVID. Maybe the button makers made buttons for the Friends and maybe a few library programs. But these items, cricket, were never, were not available to us as patrons and all the other patrons that came to the library. And referencing your handout, just quickly, you can see that there are a lot of hardworking people in the Friends. Friends been around since 65, predates me a little bit, but they, many, many Friends. We stand on the shoulders of them. Our budget is about eight K a year. And we don't, and we get that money through our hardworking volunteers, our officers right now, our T, our fundraising, the T-shirts, and our amazing ongoing book sale ladies. That's just not putting books out on carts. They collect, classify, categorize, bought dozens. Catherine Reeves and Suzie Hashmo. Amazing women, worked dozens of hours every week to get those books out there. And you can see on your handout, just pick them up. September 14th, they brought in $450 to donate for the funding of the library.
Fern Wymer? Did I get that right? Sure.
Uh, Fern Wymer, and I live at 403, uh, Oakley Drive in Denver. And I'm here this library in, and I have questions about financial things on, uh, the report that we had as briefing. And one of the things, uh, had to do with the elimination of something called ODC on the original briefing, um, because that seems like, um, other direct costs. And so it's about as much savings as there would be because that item was eliminated, um, in this budget. So I would be interested in more information about somehow personnel and ODC became collapsed into library management some way. The other, the process wise from being at these meetings is that you generally have started from the point of view of consultants on the police and, uh, fire department. And you were just talking about in another part of that meeting in December about the, um, recreation center on South Main. Um, and you didn't start from the point of view of selecting a solution before you discussed the problem or the challenge, whatever it was. And so it just seems to me that, um, the process is a little upside down. So those are some observations. Also, I think that the staff were taken particularly by size, which does not exactly support them.
Thank you. Emily Bridges?
The, you know, for this, well, I own the other, so I want to reset it. I believe that I shared my renovation outline with my councilperson who may have forwarded on to everyone. So if y'all want to talk later about that, then we can. And I also want to preface that I'm speaking, isn't not as a friend of the library. So reflecting back on the survey from 2024, I'd like to again share some of that data that I think is needed in this discussion. I have chosen the top five responses out of 400 important responses. Reasons for not visiting the library regularly is they buy their books, they don't use libraries much, don't read much, don't have a card, and the hours are not enough. Programs or services that are most important is the access to computer, Wi-Fi, name, services for children, services for teens, services for seniors, downloadable items. The five tracks, finance, career, business. Top initiative over the next five years would be to increase resources for children and families, create opportunities for involvement for the community and the library, partnerships with local businesses and nonprofits, provide more program opportunities and more online access. Our community is moving more toward a family town, and I think we need to lean into that as well as add more opportunities for our citizens who first, who's first and sometimes only language is Spanish. Um, there is some, oh, there are blind spots in the library. I just want to touch on that. You know, I run around with my kids and sometimes I notice that there's no camera in certain areas, so I wanted to touch on that. Some, there is some great staff that makes my family feel very welcome, assist in all of our needs and have some forward thinking ideas. Unfortunately, I cannot share that same sentiment for the staff in its entirety. Creation implementation is the responsibility of our librarians, and I hope that we move toward a more modern, friendly and innovative library in 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Graham?
Uh, I'm just speaking as a consumer. I use the library. I'm really overdrive at this point in time. Y'all have a unique opportunity of, this is going to be an art district at some point in time. Right down here. Canopy is part of Overdrive. I'm not sure if y'all ever thought about describing canopy. It's a wonderful documentary. It's from all over the world. It is an absolutely unbelievable platform. Overdrive, it's under their canopy. It's also older movies, not, I can't say older movies, but movies are PPR, which means public performance rights are included with them. Means you could show any of these movies. There's tons of kids content. You can show them for kids right here in the library. You can also do, uh, curated, uh, booths. So you have a movie club down here that you could want people coming in here. Or you could do it online and actually have people come down here afterwards or like a book club to sit and talk about it. It brings people in. You need to do it. And I'm selfish about this because there's documentaries I'm dying to read, but I can say I'm a consumer. Second, uh, this is about appearance. Get rid of the, uh, you're ready to do filters on the windows. Let some light in here. It is, people need to see it. I'm sorry. No reason for that not to be, just open windows so you can see. Ashley, when you're walking through here, please notice something. There are a lot of bare walls. This is an art gallery waiting to happen. Seriously, it's an art gallery waiting to happen. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, that would bring us to the end of our public comment section. And with that, I'm going to let Mr. Clark for you want to talk about the tour of the library?
Focus on Hannah.
Yes, at the fun of it.
All right, so our library tour actually begins outside the library in the lobby. Two of the library, uh, things are, we have our little free pantry and our little free fridge. Um, and these are fully staffed by donations from the public, um, just people who decide to bring things. Um, and then people just take whatever they need. Um, it's been quite popular. Um, as you can see, they're full. Um, and that's all donations. Um, and it gets, they rotate out regularly, so we're really proud of that and the impact it's been having on the community. Um, and then this is also the Friends of the Library book sale that got mentioned earlier in the meeting. That's the ongoing sale, um, where you can buy the books and then they'll come into the library. All right, so this is the main part of the library. Uh, you'll see here are two service desks. Our circulation desk where you check things out and our information desk where you ask questions. Of course, those get crossed all the time. Um, let's see. Uh, we have our library of things here. This is the cases that represent objects that are stored elsewhere. Um, we recently rebranded our adult kits into the library of things. We also have board games, which come up later in the tour, um, and we're excited about expanding that collection. Um, behind the checkout desk, you'll see some colorful bins there. Those are the bins for the best Southwest libraries deliveries. Um, twice a week, you get two or three boxes back to us and get a couple of boxes from the other libraries. Um, the books going between the other libraries, that means that the Cedar Hill, DeSoto, Lancaster and Duncanville residents all get to access books from all of the different libraries and have them sent to their whole branch. And we're really proud of having that, and it's very well used by the public. So that shared integrated library system is really important. Um, this is where our printer facts are. Um, our public computers are scattered throughout. That's one of our main services. Um, with of course checking items out. Um, so that's, um, let's see. We are going to go through the staff area. It's going to be a little narrow. So come in here, he'll play. You got a shout out?
I've been there many times.
I know. We have four machines in there so far. We're looking to acquire more depending on what people want. We'll need to get some feedback. Um, some of these machines were purchased for staff use, and we decided to bring them out to the public.
The five albums.
So we're excited about those possibilities.
2017, 2018, 2019, 2020. They're old. They're old. We're just now sitting. It's 2020. You're the one who does the mega authors, not me. Not me. Remember, I'm totally tired. But people tell me if you're talking about, I want to say exactly about Boris Zetens again, then I would like to call. Right, right, all this.
All right, so now we're in the back of the library, often known as the quiet part, but I'm not being very quiet right now. Um, this is our seating area. We have Dr. Dotson's stall house, um, some of our seating areas. We have thought about moving these periodicals up to the front, switching things around so that it's a place where people can come. There's more convenient rooms. Um, but that's, we're always looking for ways to reimagine our space and utilize it better. Um, and then you'll see as we're walking through, just our collection, we have almost 100,000 items in our collection. Um, and, and that's what you're seeing on the shelves, DVDs, books, audio books. We also have laptops and hotspots, um, that people can check out as well as our library of things. So we've got a lot of cool things going on, and then we'll keep going. All right, so now we're in the youth area of the library. Um, this area was specifically designed, um, whenever the building was built to be the youth area. We have the two kids restrooms with the short toilets. We have our comfort room and our program room where we have our programs, um, is over here. Um, it does have a maximum capacity of like 49, so we do have to use the meeting rooms for some of our larger programs, but most of them are happening in here. This month, we have a program on every single day that we're open, so we're very excited about that. Um, we also have our kids' computers and all of the kids' books, the magnet wall. Um, and then also our teen area, which has gone, undergone renovations in recent years. Um, so that it's the shape it is now, kind of the area for the teens to hang out. Um, so there's that. And then next we'll be coming back up to the front. A few more things, we're on us now. Oh, and the art up here was done by one of our library staff members, um, as well as the fall singing above, um, our youth service assistant. She's extremely creative.
Yeah, looks beautiful. How about it? It's pure nice.
Oh, no, 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 don't worry. All right, so now we're back at the front. I know we're all scattered out, so it's a bit hard to see. But we do have our seed library up here, um, as well as our books about gardening, a special collection. Um, and people have been using that. They're really enjoying that, bringing in seeds that they've, um, gathered as well as seed seeds that we provided. Uh, we have our two display cases. One of them has our, some of our Italian sister city stuff. Uh, the other one rotates right now. We're spotlighting our Duncanville ISD graduate staff, which is about half of our staff graduated from Duncanville. Um, and that one rotates every month, and we're looking at ways to make that available maybe for the public. We've had artists that have had display cases for the public in the past that did not get used very much, um, but we're looking at expanding that again and seeing how people do with it now. Um, the art back here was a community art project that was done, um, as part of our summer reading club, I believe, one or two summers ago. Um, it's really neat. There are kids that come in sometimes and they'll go to mom, look, that's the one that I did. Um, so that was a really, uh, neat project that we were able to do as, uh, with the community. Um, and then we also have, people ask us for reading recommendations. We do actually have a flipper up here that has some recommendations and different genres and things like that. We also have a few bookmarks that have recommendations, uh, for people who might want those. Um, are there any questions? Come, what did you, the Makerspace opens, the soft opening was January 2nd. So that is a brand new thing that we're, we're trialing. We're doing Maker Mondays and seeing, seeing, trying to see what the public wants and how we can gauge interest and adjust accordingly, but so, which is why it's a soft opening still. But yeah, that's, that's brand new. Oh, and our library of things board games are over there on the shelves. You can kind of see them.
Can you describe during the summer when all the youth activities go on, what is the environment like in here?
Uh, it can get pretty busy. Uh, one of our popular programs is our summer reading kickoff, which has hundreds of people attend. Um, and it's, there's just people everywhere. It's wonderful. Um, we are, during spring break, we have bigger programs like that too. Our, we're doing the pro touch of breath this spring break, so we're expecting a lot of people for that. Um, and then just during the summer, there's just more people in the library, more kids, more families. Um, we have Storytime Center, pretty popular, things like that. So, yes.
Uh, it's about the shelf. Have y'all ever thought about maybe going down, uh, in height?
Uh, we have thought about it. In some areas, we have actually done it. We're actually sort of trialing that right now on this first shelf. Half of it's a bit lower. The trade off is then when you're on the bottom shelf, it's harder to get the books on the bottom shelf. So do we want to reach or do we want to squat down? Um, but we also don't use that top shelf because it is so high.
The deal is it opens up the space. I mean, that, in it really is a, an important thing of walking in some places. You can kind of see the whole place. And they, at this height, they block. The other part of it, end caps. Have y'all thought about art on the end caps?
Um, I think that would require a bit more, uh, infrastructure than we currently have. Um, but that is something that we, we thought about and once asked for years ago and the budget didn't get it. Um, but redoing the end caps where it's something where you can display more things as opposed to just having the, the, what's our colors?
They can be different colors, even that.
Yeah.
Yes. Do y'all have any plans to partner with like the Duncanville Nature Conservancy or the Arts Commission or anything like that where they could either fund, or even the Friends, to fund something in the library, whether it be a larger seed library or a focal wall or backpacks where you can go and do something at the preserve or anything like that? Something that you come into the library to check out to get out into our seed?
Yes, we are looking at those opportunities, starting to look at those. Um, I, the Duncanville Nature Conservancy is a new one to me. I think because it is pretty new.
It is.
But I know we are looking at hopefully figuring out how to partner with the Arts Commission on some programs. We are partnering with a member of the Arts Commission on a program currently, uh, but not, uh, not with the Arts Commission itself. But yeah, we're always looking for new partnership opportunities.
That's, that's canopy.
I, I heard you.
Uh, and in regard to that, how do you track your electronic resources to know what's being effectively used and what is, are things that people might be in the canopy? And what are the, I mean, what are the costs for some of these social opportunities to get them?
Um, so the consortium that we're a part of here does not share the online resources. Part of the reason for that is Duncanville Library is part of an Overdrive Consortium with a ton of libraries in it, so we can't go sharing that with everybody. It has to be just Duncanville residents. Um, so we do get usage statistics, circulation statistics from our Overdrive. Um, we always take, like, requests. People can make recommendations or requests or suggestions. Um, and we, we look at all of that when we are developing the collection and looking at what resources to offer. Um, as far as additional resources, that might be financially prohibitive. Um, Hoopla is a good example. A lot of libraries have it, but that's encouraged use. Um, and it can be if your budget really quickly. So we do have to be cognizant of that when they're considering resources.
Yes.
Nobody has any other questions? I think that concludes the tour part, so we can get back in and do our discussions. Are you a planner?
I try to be.
Everyone's not good. Um, if you get any feedback, I'm sure that you're hearing a lot more about current state of the library and the need. Now, I guess that's what we're here for tonight. Now, with that, I'd love to go ahead and, uh, Mr. Fisher, I was just talking. Uh, this is a presentation that we're coming out of. We gave one here. I didn't think initially we were going to have to set up on this type of a week ago. So with that, um, intention, any reasons?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Council, Library Board, and everybody that's here. You know, I think one of the reasons why we're here tonight, right, is I know I've heard, um, I know some of the council members have shared with me that they've heard from residents about improving our overall customer service, improving what we can do through the improving what we can do through the library. And I think that's really what brings us here tonight, I know the council members, you know, we've been having some conversations, they have some things that they want to share us and everything. And we've been talking about different options, but an option that has come to the forefront is potentially partnering with LSS. And for tonight, it's obviously just discussion purposes, but what we wanted to just have them do a presentation, so that everybody in the room hears the same exact thing. They're going to do a brief presentation, answer some questions, and then we're going to actually ask them to step outside, so that everybody can speak freely, so that there can be some dialogue. If you want them to come back in, they can do that. Mayor, you're okay with that, Mr. Fisher? The LSS, I'll let you know.
Great, thank you, good evening, everybody. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Todd Springer, I'm the CEO of Library Services. We are a company, all we do is public libraries, and federal libraries, the country, museums, event centers. But libraries are our core confidence in our core business. So the reason why we come forward, basically, is we know that all communities are facing challenges. So one challenge is that the community continually wants more services, and there's always an emphasis to try to not factor these factors on the population. So how do we do more for less money? A big part of that, though, is really just partnering with us. We're library experts, we bring our experience, expertise, and all get into kind of a consortium model. But we're able to really expand the bandwidth of the staff. And I think a lot of what you hear, what you see, is challenging. With a staff fourteen people in a library, they work really, really hard. And they're committed to providing incredible services to the community, but there are limitations to what a small act can do. The benefit, one of the great benefits of our model, is that we're able to really expand their bandwidth and provide them with expanded support, and bring more things to the community, so you can see more and experience more. But the key of all of our model is that it's under local control. Because one of the challenges when you get into a consortium or join a larger group, it's often, they'll take your money, but then they'll tell you, you have no say in how things go. Our model only works because of all of the governance that currently is in place today, with the city, the library board, it all remains intact. So we looked at your mission statement, we looked at the cities, we looked in the libraries. The good news is we're completely supportive of your mission. We believe in the same things that you believe in. Our model only works when the staff is supporting the map. So we work every day, waking up, and a big part of what we're able to do for you really is expand your vision and your, we know that in particular, city staffs, city councils, they're plays the awful, whether it's worrying about the safety of the community, the health of the community, education of the community. It's a challenge to get to the library. We typically find that the library, as much as we all love it, it's important, falls to the bottom lines. So for us, we wake up every day thinking about your library, and we make sure that we think about people when you don't have the opportunity to. But we believe greatly in staff. So for us, for this to work, we have to convince the staff, we have to root to the staff, that we're good people, and that we're good to work with, and we'll take great care of them, because honestly, it still is the staff. So when you enter the library, whether it's at the Duncanville, still the Duncanville Public Library. So it's, you'll see most of the same people that are currently out there, and we re-badged them, which makes them our own employees, but they're still the frontline employees servicing the community. And our model goal is to make sure that the staff's freed up to do as much patron engagement as humanly possible. And I'll get into it, but it's really, we try to take the administrative functions from the staff and do it at a group level, so that way they can spend all of their time and energy doing with it, to engage you with the public. And in this call, I know your, your budget's around a million-one, which is a meaningful investment from the city. We can save the city money, they make it a predictable, long-term contract, so the city knows what the expense will be for the next decade to come, which makes it much better from a monetary perspective. But in the process, we're going to sacrifice nothing. And we think we can actually make enhancements. Certainly, saving the city ten percent is meaningful to payers, but we're not proposing any reductions of anything. And honestly, you'll be, as of now, when you say now, you have the same opportunity to change hours going forward as you do today. We're going to capture all the programming that you care about and that you love, we'll make it safe and maintained. We'll bring you opportunities to see additional programming, additional innovation opportunities. But we're going to maintain everything that you love about this current library, but also give you the opportunity to think about what else the library could be doing. Typically, various, in general, service, ten, fifteen, twenty percent in most places, it's pretty common. Our goal is to always try to reach the population that's not being currently served. And to rethink about the library, to look at the library, but even the tour, it's a great looking building. But we are working with the staff constantly, think in line of sight, think about space requirements. I'll get into it on another side, where we basically say, you know, can we read the, the materials, make sure we have active questions, but can we also free up space for more meeting space, for a teen set, for a, a larger Makerspace? Like, what can we constantly be thinking about? And part of our contract is that we bring in space planners and designers to work with the staff and work with the city, it's all part of the contract, to constantly be rethinking about the future of the library and how to make it even better. We bring in our technology team, to work with the city's technology team, to look at what's in the building, what, what else we could be bringing in, whether it's virtual reality, augmented reality, often in programming, there's a lot that people want to do with co-robotics. Make sure that we bring those programs in. So a big part of our consortium is that we operate eighty-five libraries and museums around the country. But part of that brings with it is programming from all over the country. So we're able to come to you and say, here's twelve programs that we did in a different library in Texas, they were all successful, Hannah, would you be interested in any of these programs? And Hannah might say, well, I'm looking for programming on a homeless, great, we have twelve to pick from. Would any of these work for you? So what we try to do, again, is to, to free up staff, to bring them resources, to make them more productive. And, and a big part of that is, again, looking at the library as the outreach. I know the library probably already does outreach, but how do we continue to do additional outreach to make the library even more interesting to a larger community, who might not be benefiting from it today? Grant support's another big one. We have people in Texas and nationally that are constantly looking for grants to help our libraries, because it's, again, it's very challenging for a, a director to always be up on the world. What are all the grants and monetary opportunities that are out there? So how do we? So forty-five years ago, a bunch of librarians got together and said, is that our way to do this? This doesn't feel efficient. So it wasn't my creation, I didn't have a decade, but this was performing. They basically said, well, we believe libraries from an administrative perspective are roughly the same as all libraries. Now certainly, the program's going to be different to every community, the materials might be slightly different, but the administrative part of a library is pretty consistent. So what if we did all of the administrative services for a public library on a group level? So not every library would have to have all the same one administrative staff to get the services they need. Could we make it more efficient, and could we, if we do that together as a group, could we get some power? Could we get some buying power? If I want to go out and get an ILF, so the system that operates the library, if I buy it for eighty-five libraries, I'll get a much better price than you get by yourself. If I look at a collection budget that's hundred thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars, I know, go out today, I spent seven million dollars on my collections around the country. So I get the best pricing from any system in the country. And all my books come shelf-ready, so my staff doesn't have to put on stickers, spine labels, do all the administrative stuff. They come in, in the box, ready to go on the shelf. But I can do that and process it for a lower cost than any library in the country, because I buy on a large scale. So, and they're right, I mean, you basically take all of the administrative services, the collection management, all of it, on a group scale, you hit a lot of efficiencies, you get better at it, and you save money. Because again, of the money that you're going to be spending, if you spend it with us, we're going to try to put ninety-five percent of that in patron engagement programming activities, which is what really is helpful and meaningful, it's what the staff love to do, and it's what your community really wants. A big part of it is also supporting the development of the staff. So we will, again, we're a company of librarians, we support librarians. We have competitive benefits, retirement plan, 401K. But we also do tuition reimbursement for people who want to go on and get their MLIS, support their career development. If you have loans, we have loan forgiveness, because we want to help you get out of that situation. But we're really trying to be competitive and sensitive to what we need, because we're not successful if our staff aren't happy and successful. And in addition to that, all of the staff will have access to a much larger library community. One of the challenges that you run into on staff is that you know what you know within your building, or maybe even a couple libraries over, but our team shows them and brings them into a larger community, where your director will be one of thirty directors. So they have that peer network, that they can constantly reach out to, to ask questions in the state environment, other directors as well. It's a partnership. I think the number one thing I hear when I talk to my customers is you're a partner. We think of LSS as our partner, that's how we like to be seen, because that's the work for everybody. So we have to be a good steward and partner to this, to the city council, and support them and implement what they want as far as their governance within the library, report back. We do a lot, we'll talk a little bit about analytics, but we have a lot of, a lot of reporting app that we do. So we can see, are we being effective, are our resources being used efficiently? What's the cause benefit of these choices of our material spend, of our spend? But we want to make sure that there's lots of visibility for the community. We care very deeply about our friends and our volunteers, they are the lifeblood of our libraries. We are passionate about their commitment and what they drink in the library. So we work really hard to make sure that they're supported, that their funds are used wisely, but also that the volunteers are doing meaningful work. And when I say that, what I'll say is that we like to go in to make sure that they're able to do the things that they think are valuable for themselves as well as for the library. These sons go in and volunteers are just relegated to do some manual tasks in the back of the library. That's fine, if that's what you want to do as a volunteer, but we're sensitive to the fact that these are apparently smart people, who have to be able to contribute, you know, in a meaningful way. Library Advisory Board, there are all libraries, there are governing boards in some of them. We're very good about meeting with them, coming to all their meetings, attending everything, working with them, taking feedback from them, making sure that their thoughts are incorporated into the library. And we're very good about partnering with local youth organizations, I know that can happen there as well. We look at the outreach, but it really is well, when we're partnering with the school districts, with all of the community centers within the community, make sure there's no duplication of effort, that we're all in each other. The example I typically use will be with the school system, where we'll start robotics club in, in the library, as a stepping stone to what they're going to then be doing in the middle school and the high school. It's a stepping stone that'll then happen in the community college, junior college, to college. So it's all working in concert together to really help with the education within the building. So a, a big portion of this, my point of this one, it's not privatization, sometimes that word will come out, you're going to privatize the library. Privatization would be you giving the assets of the library and taking it from you. We have, we don't own the building, we don't own the materials, we don't own anything in the building. We're just a good steward, the tenant of the building. We are the staffing and expertise within the building, but it's still very much all your physical assets that will always remain. Even the materials purchased are your materials, not ours. Ben Williamson, who's now the city manager of Street and Farmer's Branch, big advocate of our model. He's been with us from the, almost the beginning, at Farmer's Branch. So Farmer's Branch is a good success story, they've dealt with us since two thousand and eleven. We helped them through their refurbishment and renovation of that building, saved them a ton. Farmer's Branch is really into community average measurement and analytics. So Ben is all believes that they're constantly serving their community, they're happy with your services, or you know, what do you want, what do you need? And we always rank like very top of all the city services. Big supporter of ours, they just renewed, we went from a five contract to a ten-year renewal back in two thousand and twenty. So we're excited about that partnership, as we've gone on that for thirteen years. Down Street Library, they're one of our oldest customers, started back in two thousand and thirty. Again, community going, we just now moved them into a new library, because they were, they've never been a redup. Now they have a library the size of hereover. But we made the most of that, by giving them all the support and services that that library director needed, to feel like they were running a library that was thirty thousand square feet. So they've dealt with us since two thousand and three, again, very happy with us. We, we just got a Google grant, so we're putting a new makership with them for a hundred thousand dollars. So they're super excited, it's just a growing, thriving library. Lumber Texas, pretty close to them as well, just started with us in two thousand and twenty-two. And it was really, again, they're building a new library, we're going to be a big part of that process. They have a library that was retiring and just was kind of sleepy, not the end in the library. And we've really cleaned it up, freshened it up, it's a beautiful library now. And the city manager will tell you that, super engaged, super happy. Lumber Texas, two years ago, up in Houston, very happy customer of ours today. They were having challenges with getting the level of services that met the greater community's needs. And we were able to go in, work with the staff, we make sure that we were in alignment with what the governance of the library was looking for within the library. But in the process, we did a large cleanup in that library as well. At their guidance, we took out some of the shelving, we created a teen scene in there. Just kind of, again, rethink, that library hadn't changed in like twenty years. We really just wanted to rethink how they're approaching their community. Very happy customer, all referenceable, I'm happy about that one as well. Our plant that we built, Library Community Alliance, comes with your contract, was built by librarians and our son developers several years ago, because we wanted to answer all these questions. Where are things going, what's working, what's not working, so I was spending, where like, where's my community coming from, what's demographics, my reaching the people? So we created this software program that now includes like two hundred libraries around the country. It would come with your contract as well. But I promise you, you'll see a lot about what's going on within the building, within your community, and how it's all going together. Libraries are evolving, I'm going to get all the time, the library's going to be here ten years, twenty years, or are they, are they still a thing? Do we need libraries? I have people all the time, I want to build a library, I don't think we need libraries anymore. Yes, learning centers, whatever you want to evolve them into, community, they're morphing into a larger footprint. That's what we wake up every day thinking about, talking with people within the industry, outside the industry. We will constantly be talking to you about what your thoughts are for the future, bringing you what we're seeing, what we're thinking, but also listening to you, doing community surveys and doing broader surveys of the council. We'll make sure that you guys see everything there is to see within the world of libraries, from here to the other part of the country and beyond, and you can pick and choose what we think is appropriate for your community. So sum it up, because we, again, again, we've been doing this for a very long time. We understand how to do this effectively, efficiently. Very happy customers, they're all available to speak to anybody who wants to interview them. You know, we, we're part of our staff and the people that make us, because that's who we really are. It's, it's our librarians, and it's our, our team of about eight hundred and sixty-five people that show up every day, service the communities. This is actually the summation statement. So yes, and so again, local staff, tailored to your community, local governance. We'll bring you best practices, we'll give us a controllable long-term cost, so you know predictably what it's going to be for the next ten years, so you can plan for that. And those are our logos. That sums up my presentation, but I appreciate your, your time. Happy answering any, any questions? Do you have any questions?
And so, current staff, would become employees of LSS?
We would hope so, we don't have all the minutes.
Okay, but the city would no longer employ library services staff?
Correct.
So commensurate benefits and packages and health coverage and things such as that, salaries?
Yeah, so I was fortunate enough to be able to meet with the staff a month ago, and kind of took two hours to kind of walk them through, just to show them, like, yes. For this to work, as, as disruptive as this can be, which causes sprouts and upset people, I need to turn that around pretty quickly. The only way I know how to do that is to not completely turn upside down the world, which means, if you like your title, you can keep, if you like your salary, you're going to keep it. We're going to give you health benefits that we think are as meaningful, equal to, or better than, in many cases, you currently have. With tuition, like, we're going to go through the list to say, I, I appreciate you didn't ask for me to come here, and this is upsetting and disruptive, but we can make you as happy as we possibly can by, by not putting you at a disadvantage. So if you've been here twenty-seven years, it's going to be like you've been working for us for twenty-seven years. Your vacation pools, your vesting, we're not going to make it like you're starting over on day one. Because if, if they're not happy, this whole thing will not be a success. I need their happiness, I need their smiles. And I promise, we might not smile today, but I will get them to a smile point once we come over on the other side.
Would, would all have equal vacation time and everything, would be with that?
Yes.
And from what you were saying earlier, in, in this area, twenty-two years, they come ready?
Yeah, twenty-one years.
And these are the logos, or these are?
Oh, these aren't all of them, these are just a sampling, because we have libraries in Florida, Kansas, Tennessee, California's a, a large group of libraries, Virginia, Texas, I guess, um, yeah, so, Tennessee.
I, I remember something else said about employee hat loan company, the owner needed to cancel a contract, or is that accurate?
No, we had a few over there, the life of the company. So what typically happens is what we have from time to time, so the one that I, was speaking of was Liam, because that was in Texas. That's like the only one other. speaking of was Liam, because that was in Texas, that's like the only one in Texas. And that was a problem that we were as much at fault in. So we had a, that was one of our first customers in Texas, we had a director who'd been there for sixteen years, loved by the community, loved by us. She had a lot of autonomy because she'd been around for so long. And they had a situation where Drag Queen Storytime came to town and said, maybe we'd love to use the library for that? And the director went to the city parks person, her contact, and they said, sure. And then the mayor said, no, and then they said, yes, and they said, no. Then it became a national thing, then you all stood in the press and it got delayed. So, eh, yeah, it was, we took ownership of that. What do you, I just, again, we're not a political company at all. We don't play in social media, we don't make a big stink, but we, if mistakes are made, we own them and we, we take, we take responsibility. So in that one, uh, it just, it, it didn't go well because of the miscommunications and the problems it created for the city.
And involved, well, well, you say forty-five years, wasn't it?
Yeah.
You got, as far as your approach and work with collaborators, what, what's the different problem?
Yeah.
Twenty years ago, we built now.
So the last regime, so my, my team's been in place for almost a decade now, and what we came into is a, they had a different style, they didn't thought about operating libraries. What you would see is that historically, they would go in and say, you're all terminated and you have to apply for your job. And I'll put you through an application process and I might hire you, I might not, but it's, you gotta, that's how it works. Like their approach was different, they just thought, as technically they could do that. So we are much more focused on employee happiness, I'd say we're much more focused on what, what I think is long-term success, which is really investing in our people. Not that they didn't care about people, I'm sure that they, they did care about people, they just had an odd way of showing it at times. And the prior founder Frank Pezzanini, we say things about librarians and, you know, they're, you know, they're just not very efficient, they're not very smart, just things that were not, things he needed to say. So he kind of made himself a better than enemy a little bit within the library space itself. We're much more engaged and involved within the library space as good people, who really do care about library space itself. Uh, so, you know, I think we've, we definitely evolved, and I think when I look at my customer, my employee surveys, and they talk about us, I, I see that they've gone up every year, which is, you listen to us, you care about us, good people, and you give me the opportunity to do what I love and I'm passionate about. So, you know, and we're much more in technology and innovation, we brought in a group of people they didn't have before, who really understand those things. So like building library two, that's all for, that was us more recently. Uh, we're, we're probably more broadly about the future libraries and evolution.
To your, to your point, there are things like Overdrive and Canopy and even the print vendors, like we've created national partnerships with all of them to make them more affordable for our libraries, right? So our libraries get discounts, we have the best discount rate in the industry, and we use that back office piece, which are not library folks, right? They're purchasing people, they're negotiating hard with the vendors to make sure that we get the best deals so that you guys can have access to them. So we might have a print vendor, our e-materials vendors, uh, giving us a patient discount at forty or fifty percent off of what a traditional standalone library system. So what that means is, you know, if you want, if you, if you get more materials than you use analytics, we always say more is not better, or than more, right? So we'll look and we'll see, the Huntsville example, uh, they have about fifty thousand items and one, our first day on the job, we ran a report, we realized that twenty thousand of them hadn't been checked out for ten years. So to the point around sidelines and shelf space and opening up space for teen and teen space and putting in a gaming center and, you know, I mean, you're right over the hundred thousand dollars for those of you who are on the floor, right? That may or may not will probably be the size of the room, right? Versus, you know, what you see in others. So that innovation has really come along in the last ten years and it's kind of credited about bringing in people that think a little differently about libraries from the fact, not necessarily pageant, but how do we give efficiencies to free the library folks that are more pageant-based and more community-based.
And a, a good question for me that I typically get is why don't more libraries do this? And I would tell you after a decade, ninety-nine percent of the time this breaks down is because there's an ideological or fundamental, only because staff in the library should government employees and should not be private employees. We've sat through these meetings a thousand times, and that's what we end up with, which is, are we okay with them being a private employee versus government employee? And there, there are people who say yes, and there are people who say no, but still overwhelmingly that model hasn't flipped yet. And I would tell you that I've been in this for a decade and hopefully for another decade to come, based on pension issues, based on fundamental financial issues within the city and local governments, people are going to have to start making tougher choices. And again, I'm all for first responders, teachers, like, God bless them all, we need them and that they are critically important, and the librarians are critically important. But I'm just telling you, pecking order of what we can afford from a pension perspective from their, it's a, it's an alternative model, so we're satisfied, it's small, very small pensioned area, staffing, but it really expands the opportunity to give up anything, spending less money. So I'm, I'm confident, because I've been saying for a decade, that with all these changing economic times, this has become a more popular model for people to consider going forward.
Mr. Cruz?
I did it.
Okay.
Okay. Um, once the city has decided that they will contract with you, what is the expected timeline to see the improvements in the building?
So our goal is to hit the ground, because we want the city to look really, we want everything to, to, to show well. So our goal is to get a timeline in place pretty quickly to look at how long it will take to move over the staff. Typically, that lines up more with their benefits than anything else, because we don't want there to be a loss of benefits. So we'll figure that part out, but then we pick a day where we say, okay, the library's closed on Sunday, Monday morning, we'll start. But on day one, what we typically do is go to our partners or community and say, what can I do, give me a, give me something that looks good. In some places, it's easier than others. So, and this is in pretty good shape, some just put, put a paint on the wall, like clean the carpet, um, put in a new piece of equipment. I will look for an early win victory to show the community that things have changed. And then we rapidly want the staff and we bring people in to support the staff pretty quickly to really, again, we want to listen, we don't want to change for the sake of change. But if the staff said, hey, that we've always wanted to just, or the friends said, we've always wanted, just tell me and let's get it going and let's, let's make those changes, let's get this community outreach, expand, party on its current event, but let's make the great first impression.
And then kind of the mid, the mid-range first year, we, we had talked to you all about breaking in our library services team, so everything from space planners to people, real consultants to do community needs assessments, um, putting together a real strategic plan based on data, right? So when we plug in library two and start getting the data, we'll segment all your patrons, we'll show where our people are coming from, we'll look at underserved areas of the community, and all that's part of the contract. And so that emits the ground right away, and you'll start to see the benefits of that in six to twelve months, because we'll be coming back to you with a ton of data saying, hey, you didn't know this, but, you know, in this part of the city, we could probably put a, a, like an Amazon library for pickup or returns, or in this part of the city, or to your point, hey, we need more e-materials, so we're going to take some of the print budget, we're going to put it in the e-materials. There's all kinds of things that we'll find out as we get into the data and bring those experts in. And what it does is allows the staff to continue staffing and allows those experts coming and working with them without taking too much of their time away from the community.
And these are things that you're continuously communicating with the public and with the council, that way you can kind of manage those expectations.
Correct. And we're going to all the other library advisory board meetings, we'll provide updates.
Mr. Cruz, do you have a question?
This is a proper question, and actually, uh, a few of you already answered about salaries and benefits and current employees and, uh, we're recording this, so if anybody asks you later, I can step and watch the video. But, a, and, and by the way, just, you know, full transparency, um, you know, we, we toured here with Farmer's Branch, but I actually called up a couple of the other libraries that you don't manage and they're worse models. And except, you know, and I didn't tell them what it was, and I said, I'll do some research and it was very similar we have to. So back to governance, so as far as the collection, um, you know, how do you, how do I make those decisions about what books we have?
Yeah, so we work, the governance and the collection policy, I assume the library currently has a collection management policy. So what we do is take a look at that policy, we get familiar with it, then we make questions or we ask if you're happy with your current policy. Uh, besides that, if people say like, last year, with all the things that they've heard about in the press and everything, did any of our libraries experience any of those challenges as far as book banning or anything else? But I'm happy to say we didn't have any issues in any of our libraries. And that's because we're really good at adhering to your policy. Where we typically find that libraries were in trouble is when there is governance and there is policy, but then the library seems to, for whatever choices, go off the, go off those policies and start making their own decisions. Um, we typically find, again, if, if we follow a policy and the staff knows what the policy is, we won't have any issues with that whatsoever. But it's, it's, again, we have a collection management team that brings kind of what the world looking at in regards to collections to the local library staff, to the library director, and says, we'll build a list with you, library director, and what do you, what do you currently purchase that you need specifically to the, to dump it? And let's make sure that they continue to show up every day, um, if you have a lot of Spanish population to do or other, let's make sure that we're meeting the needs of the local community. I don't tell the local directors what to purchase, I don't get any from that. I want them to purchase things that are going to circulate and that are going to make people happy here.
So what you're saying is, you asked us what we want out of collection and dump it?
Well, and then we'll also give you the data. And I will tell you what that is, because a lot of people, so remember that, the library I gave you is in over two thousand libraries, and you'd be surprised, a lot of people say, hey, we made great choices, and then we show them that fifty percent of what they purchased hasn't checked out for the six months, which we call delinquent. And so the, we're able to give you the data for those trends and say, you might think that, but let's really look at the data. That collection management team does also two other things, they do the analytics and they also look at compliance with the policy. So they work with the director and so, you know, if there's a big word that comes up and they go, you know what, this doesn't work, right? It doesn't match the data, we're buying what's, what's that aren't going to be checked out, or in materials that nobody wants or does want, right? So that's what happens with that load staff and back office staff. And then we also make them compliant policies that the city puts up.
And, and a large portion will be by the line too, so we're going to make sure that we get that as quickly or not quicker than everybody else. Because we have relationships with the paper and tailors and broader arts and angles in the world and say, I don't know how fast you're shipping to this library, but you've got to ship it as fast as you do to any of our libraries.
And then, uh, no, I've heard you mention several times a ten-year contract, is that what you'll typically start off with?
We do, I mean, that's what we, we recommend, I mean, it's one that's based on performance. So as always, I've got a clause in it that says, if we're not performing, you let us know, if you don't solve that performance issue, uh, then the contract is terminated. So I'm happy to put that out there that I have to perform in order to maintain the contract. But what we find typically is that there's just, we put in a signal investment for several years, far in excess of what you're ever going to pay me, because we just have to, we get to know the library to give, to make positive changes in the library. It's all, we put a lot of debt for them. So over a ten-year period, it works itself out, it's fair and equitable for them.
And then just one more question, this is actually for the city manager. Um, so the library director, who is he or she currently reports to? And, I'll, you, you, you and maybe your assistant, your assistant, and that, that individual, how many other departments, uh, is that individual managing?
The assistant manager of the community, which handles library, that's, I believe, is five departments reported to that assistant manager.
Including the library? What are a couple of those departments?
For instance, Parks and Rec, uh, the Field House, uh, is another, um, library, uh, Marshall, I miss him. Oh, oh, good.
I, I guess kind of, didn't have this, uh, you know, I know this recommendation came from Mr. Pete's, because I was not, I didn't succeed, um, but the part of the idea was that it would also, um, help improve, uh, the busy efficiency of working with all these different departments and not just the library. So I don't know if that's something you can speak to as far as, sorry, the recommendation came, and, and, you know, I know you're talking about the library savings, but there are other things that are involved.
Yeah, um, thank you, Councilman Cruz. You know, as, as you know, and a lot of council members know, you know, this year we've gone through a lot of transition in two thousand and twenty-four, uh, from a year ago now, from restarting, all the transition of the different directors and the different departments and everything. And there were things we really had to focus on, a perfect example is past due audits and finding some, some, some really high priority type stuff. One of the things though that we kept hearing, and I'll just go ahead and say it, is the need to improve the customer service experience, uh, in particular, I would say, planning permitting, something we've been working on, the library and the Field House. And so, uh, we've been looking for different opportunities to improve that customer service experience for our residents, um, for that. And this was one of the things that had come up through that. I know that, um, um, through the Texas League of Municipalities, I think is how we originally, um, came to lead LSNS, um, but, uh, working with some of the other municipalities and understanding that. So if this was, uh, a partnership with LSNS, I fully see that the assistant and city manager of the community would still have a lot of engagement with the library director as well as at LSNS, um, but it would also probably free up a little bit of time to spend more time with specifically, I think, Parks and Rec, uh, we're always looking to improve things with Parks and Recreation as well as improving our, uh, public relations, which is something we want to focus on, whether it's community surveys or just additional getting information out in new ways and those types of things. So there, there's certainly a ancillary benefit.
So it's not potentially disbenefiting life, but we're also looking to fix a lot of this as well. And then just one, this might, hopefully this is a quick question, currently the director answers to city manager, you know, direct to city manager, so with LSNS, is it just right in between, does that have that structure?
Yes, and we, then we both have worked at city manager based on that experience.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions, but I thought that was going to happen, so.
So, 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 what would happen to the current, through the consortium with surrounding city libraries?
It would stay up.
It would, okay.
That was my question.
Yeah, I, I'd say, you know, we wouldn't change the ILS or change that relationship unless everybody was on board with it and didn't break that, but.
Anything else we've had yet? We'll have to circle back, uh, at this point, so, discussion, okay? But we'd be glad, actually, that some appropriate one, I don't know how many, but, um, two type of questions, um, what's your, uh, employees' experience with working with cities on expansion, expansion and/or remodeling projects to meet the needs of what we just saw today?
Yeah, that's, I love those projects, we do them all the time, we have relationships. I just had a call today with Genzler and Princeton Texas, because Princeton Texas is building a new library, we're in the library, I took the architect to go through that process. Uh, Farmer's Branch, we're really proud of the renovation and refurbishment we just completed it, and our library looks fantastic. But those are the, those are fun projects and we bring lots of people who love doing that to, to you under your contract, where normally if you had to go out on your own without our contract, you, you wouldn't be spending some money with con, with people to get that type of level, so it's, but we would love to do it here.
Okay, so, and that starts, well, obviously the council figures out that we have what the budget is for remodeling, reference station project, but like we were in that part of where we're walking around, and you mentioned, as you took us through the office area, basically this all got, was what we had to work with.
Yeah.
So you're listening to staff as we're going through tonight and then having conversations with them, um, if we decide to partner with you, you have conversations with the staff and, and others, I know I said that too, and hopefully the staff, because they recognize the crowdedness of, of the situation and the in cap question that came up, and so the partnership that goes on within our partnership.
Yeah, so we would open, our director would be working with us to draft any proposal recommendations. We could always have a little call wish list that we bring to Doug or to the city manager and say, here's what we've identified as we think, based on everything just described, here's what we, costs that we think would cost. And then we've had some that have been on a wish list for three years, five years, ten, and eventually they happened, or, so we're always looking for ways to improve, but we bring it through. Or, so we're always looking for ways to improve, but we bring it through the system because we know clearly you have the budget to go to do any of these things.
Certain things we've done, like, I'm still one of the first to be dealt with, space and land, because that was so important to them. You know, so we brought the, the architect in, you know, how can we?
All right, that, second question, then, I have another question back here. How far out do you model your libraries in terms of technology and what you see libraries in the future really? And how far out do you look?
Well, we look, we're typically looking on the bleeding edges stuff. We look at stuff that is first mover stuff, but we also look at it and say, what would this community benefit from most, based on the dynamics of the community, what's important to them? We like to, to look at all available resources that are out there, because we like to try to purchase it on a group level so that it's affordable for all of our members to go on access to that. But we, we would promise you that you're not going to, you'll see anything that anybody else has seen in the country in regards to what is the future of technology or what's available to a library. And then we could all say, that's not good for us, that's interesting for us, how do we afford to do that? And we can lease or finance or figure out a way to get that to be used as well.
Just a quick one.
If there's an issue with the LSNS staff and the citizens, how's that handled?
So our HR team and our customer service team, so our director reports to a vice in the library operations. So between that person and our HR team, we're first responders. We basically, if there's an issue with a patron or if there's an issue with a staff member, internally, we do our own, I would call it meditation, we do our own, we try to figure out what's going on. And then we come up with, we follow all the rules and laws and policies of around those areas. And we basically, depending on whether it's something that the city manager is aware of, we'll bring those to the city manager or the designate. Say, here's what we just had in the library, here's how we handled it, or how would you like us to handle it? We always default back to city policy. So even though we operate in, you know, all these different places, we said a situation in California today where there's, they lost power because of the fires, so we went to the county and said, what would you like us to do? And the county said, close the library today, reopen some. So we, our staff is very good at not figuring it out on our own. We communicate upward and we communicate effectively and efficiently, but we like to handle things. So we typically handle ninety-eight percent of the stuff that happens. You, you call our other city manager, you're like, I hear like one thing a year within the library about a patron or station. But they know we typically handle anything that will happen.
Very good question. Um, I'm going to try to express this. So I used to work for Dallas Parkview, and we were assigned to a fire station. So I'm assuming that this goes through our folks who'd be assigned here. At times, other fire stations would be, say, like First of Doral, that's five people short. Would you, would, would some of these folks be moved over there temporarily, or how would, how would that work?
No, um, that was a practice we operated with, that can go, because there was some of that going on. We were hearing from our customers, it wasn't working out very well, so we learned from what drive back then. Say, no, what we'll do today, because we do have people in, you know, in other local libraries in the area. If there was an emergency and needed to pull somebody, I'd probably try to find somebody who wasn't from, you've got to work that day in that other library, so I don't want to affect their level of service. But for example, if you were short of director right now, or if you were needing somebody, I would look to one of our assistant directors, major library, to come in and help out. But it would only be because we've got it fully covered, it would be very temporary in nature. But it's, especially if it's an opportunity for a person to look at an opportunity in another library as a permanent solution. But, you know, we will leverage expertise and support, but we won't take people from Dunkin'ville and put them red. We, we've never actually had to do those things that's ever come up.
And then secondly, since, you know, the staff hired you, the city anymore, what are their options on maybe move to Red Oak or get a bit closer to that direction, or whether it's a position maybe, was it just more of an interview hiring type process?
Happens a lot more than it used to. Yeah, when I started, I was like, why do all our directors will be here for twenty years? That used to how, it used to be. Now, a lot of movement, whether it's people in the library level or the director level, for family reasons or just, they just want to move around. So we had the Farmers Branch director move to Homestead, Mayaboard as the director. The director in Florida went to California where his family was as the director. So the good thing is, if you said, I don't want to, I want to work in another city, you're already our employee, so you don't have to fly paperwork. You just show up, suddenly you're working in Orlando, Florida. So it's kind of broadens opportunities for staff, usually it's family reasons for the, yeah, it's, it's relatively easy. And the good thing for us is continuity of service. What happens is, what's disrupted is when you lose a director, assistant director, because you, then the city is like, well, we got to go find them. We don't really hire these people very often. So we're, we do it all day, law recruiters, we have a bench of people who'd be like, wow, I've been waiting for this opportunity. You've been coaching me up to be a director, suddenly they need one, you know, maybe I'll apply for that, that'd be great. So it gives us a notified of a person, but also there's a, a level, there's an opportunity, expands their opportunities relatively easily with a comfortable family, people that they know to work with.
I wanted to point out a question about job posts, so you have a position in the library that's open. And how is that posted out to, to surround the area so people know that job? Because they're no longer, would they be posted on our job post? And how do you communicate that you actually won't be working for us?
Well, I think that's something we have to work out with the details if we're going in this direction. But we do have links available for our website, so we can always link over to their application, right? You could go in and click on, they have other jobs, if you'd like to see other jobs to the library, click here.
Yeah, we work, every city's a little different as far as like their website, our website, like how they're all linked together. Some have said, no, it's, the city's going to maintain the website, but we, we've seen it all. But we post all of our open positions publicly, because we do want to see the best pool of candidates that are out in the community as well.
And then what you, what you also find with the question, we run a very low vacancy rate. So we, it means we have high unemployment, our annual vacancy rate is somewhere in the two to four percent range. So for every one hundred employees we have, there's typically only two, two or three jobs. So we have a really good recruiting, and they are consistently finding the best candidates. And as you might imagine, being in the technology space, we have, and public libraries being public information, you know, we have a pretty good idea of similar libraries and similar municipalities and who their directors and assistant directors are and might be a good fit from a demographic perspective or promotion perspective. And so we're looking at that data on a real world basis across the nine hundred and ten thousand libraries across the country.
But on the counter, the key is, you'll never have to worry about staff again, because I, I worry about that. So if a director lives, I, I will get somebody in this building to make sure that you don't notice it through the record. I will find the next director, and in our process, we bring the director candidate to the city council, the library board, and go and say, we think this is different, you think so? So although they're our employees, we would never hire a director without the blessing of the city council or the library advisory board. And the same thing, if we had a city that said, this director does not work for us, then they don't work for us either. Like, we're, we, there's not that level of autonomy, you know, in state, side, you know.
Okay, where's your, your question?
Um, you have a West Coast and an East Coast headquarters. Where are you located in Texas?
Well, we're really located in the libraries. I mean, for the most part, when we say headquarters, those days of actually having a physical headquarters is long since gone. All are on planes or physically in the locations. So right now, we have about a hundred fifty employees in Texas because of the libraries that we operate. We have people, like the vice president of library operations for Texas lives in New York, but she's on a plane, which eighty percent, I'm in Texas all the time. We're, we're wherever our stores are. So there really, there's some administrative staff in Maryland, there's some administrative staff in California, and we have administrative staff, our management team's actually in twelve different states. Because we probably, then somebody said to me here, I think, well, what if I want to keep doing collection management? I said, well, you can, but you're probably interviewing it for a larger part of our organization. So I could end up with a collection management team member out of this library who will be located here, but sort of saying, lots of libraries are on collection.
Okay, I want to circle back. You had a pretty discussion between council library and friends library. Are you part of the friends of the library?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I apologize.
No, that's fine.
I'm reading this, pardon me, question.
Sure, I'm Catherine Marie, and my question was, how much autonomy is that giving for the library to work? Is it really more autonomy than she would be had before, or less?
I very, you, I would, I'd love to, well, how would they answer that? I would say, I think they would say there's more. And I would say they think there's more because they have more freedom to, to be broader in their view of the world of libraries, because they're part of a much larger library and community. Because typically, a library director is part of the city staff. There's probably no other library directors on that staff or people who understand the library or work with the library on that group. So I think they probably think they've got more because they, they've got a larger community. They know that I want them to be happy and successful, whatever that means. It's not what I want, it's what the city wants. So I say to the library director, do what you got to do to make your, to, to make everybody happy in your community. And I'll support whatever that looks like, and let's talk about what that is. But that's, that's the number one priority, that's all they've got to worry about focusing on. Because, again, if they're not happy and successful, this whole thing falls apart. My directors would most support people.
And then, just a comment that I want to respond to, and one of the terms I do, I thought, well, why don't you volunteer and help this company make money, and maybe be a line?
Sure.
I'd like to hear about that.
Yeah, so that is important to us, because we, that is the number one thing we typically hear when we go into these situations, is I'm not going to volunteer for, or we would say, are you going to just make volunteers do all the work, is that how you make money? So no, all of that, that's off the table. We basically, we highly value volunteers, and we work really hard to make sure that they're having a meaningful experience within the library. You volunteer for the community and the library, you don't volunteer probably for me or the city most part. You're doing it because of your passion for the library itself. We want to make sure that that action remains, and you feel really good and strong about your commitment and responsibility to the library itself. I'm proud to say that we've never lost volunteers in this process, although there's always that conversation that comes up in this conversation. Will the volunteers disappear because of now? But no, they, it doesn't work without volunteers, and if anything, we try to make it a more, we want to make sure that you're rewarded and felt appreciated in the library. But we need friends and volunteers, we need them to be engaged and feel like they're being heard and that they're having a meaningful, positive experience, because we're always going to be, we have them in all of our libraries.
And once again, I apologize for the oversight, a bad of mine, but they're your friends, and I scared off. Anybody have any questions? Counsel, anybody else?
And all the funds that the friends generate, I mean, it's within here, they don't, they don't come to us to get distributed. They stay here within your group and.
Grants, donations, we take zero off of those, like, that's, that's one that belongs to the city. To grant to the city, to donation to the city. We'll do the best we can to stretch those dollars, so if the friends end up buying something like for a maker's space, we'll try to teach you the best deal possible to buy that stuff to get, to stretch your dollars further.
And currently, those fund decisions about what we purchase are made by the friends. Would that be continued?
No, it's their, their donation, their, their, yeah, they're still controlled, for sure.
But like I said earlier, like in council, they, they have planned, you know, to spend a lot of kiosks and things around the city, and we figured, we found that through our purchasing agreements, we could do double. So, you know, they had a two hundred fifty thousand dollar grant, and we were able to basically double the amount of services in the community for that two hundred fifty thousand dollars because of our relation. Okay, so, city manager, we talked earlier about the request, and we have a private conversation?
Yeah, so, still a public meeting, but we're going to ask LSNS to get out of the room just to make sure that nobody feels uncomfortable, so that you can continue your conversation, which is, I'm going to leave you in that way if you want to bring it back to the panel.
So, I think that's something about, you know, you kind of hung up. At, at this point, I, I think it was at a council member's request that we, they could go ahead and do this in a more private, I'd say, between the board and friends and citizens and the council. So with that, and continuing our discussion, and again, go back to comments or questions that we might have, if you feel more comfortable with moving out of room, so, all of the, no.
Well, so I, so I want to start with this, because when I, the last time we had them here, and we ran out of time to have this discussion, so it's what we're having now. But, you know, I also ask to have this meeting for us to discuss the current state of the library and the vision of the library and what we see moving forward. And as part of this conversation, whether or not as we're looking at the current needs and the status and looking at, okay, what, where, where are we headed? Can that be handled with the current staff, or can it be improved by using a third party? So, you know, part, part of what I was wanting with that request is just for us to have, because we've never, he was right about one thing is that, you know, library, it falls to the bottom of the list. I mean, we've never, at least because I've been on the council, we've never had a discussion about the state, state of the library. We've never had a discussion about what we want our library to be. We have lots of discussion about fire and police rates, we have lots of discussion about servicing, you know, every ability, we never had talked about the library. And so that was kind of part of what I was hoping is that we could have a conversation about. And, you know, I don't think we, we as a council have ever been in there before, except for we had to join you. And so, yeah, I know, I know they're out there, but I really wanted us as a community to have a conversation about what we see, what's going on now, and again, where we're headed. So I, I didn't want a whole conversation to be about whether or not we go with it.
Okay, well, let's open it up with, what may have brought us here to the bump where we were talking with you post today was what brought our attention to investigating the need to look outside. Anybody have comments or?
Sure, not so much about them per se, but if I go back to what council member was, was looking to the, the vision for the library, right? I think one of the, there's been a few things that have been shared with me by residents or even employees or other departments, council members, community members about the library. As they were saying, the library is our evolved, right? And, and what can we do to make the Dunkin'ville library be an amazing place? To not only rent your books, but also a community gathering spot? I know I've had conversations with the staff this past year a lot about utilizing space in the world for art and other things, especially in life, all the work that's been going on with the Arts Commission. Obviously, we did survey, and I think one of the things that kept coming up over and over again was, are we really openly enough in thinking broad enough to really think about that vision, what that vision is? And are we, are we nimble enough to be able to move as that vision changes, right? Because especially with libraries, that's going to change as, as we go. And as suggestions come up, are we open to trying new suggestions? And I think that, I think in part, that's what we're here today. That ability to, what is the best way to meet those needs of the community? You know, you did a survey, and I know a lot of time was put into doing the survey and collecting that information, and there was good results, and it still always goes back to its achievements that we, we talk about often at council, right? There's forty thousand people in this community, and we hear from such a small percentage, or there's such a small percentage who needs the library, right? What can they do to get a better response, and what can they do to hear from more residents about what they would like the facility to be? And if there's other tools in the toolbox that we're not using, I think in part, that also appears as to this conversation. And if there's other tools in the toolbox that we're not using, I think in part, that also appears as to this conversation throughout other resources that we may be able to tap into to utilize that. So, um, it's probably a long-winded response there, maybe.
What I think will help start about, um, it makes me think, by the way, and I'm not gonna claim to be the most knowledgeable person about our library obligations over the last few years, but I'll ask the room and, uh, of course, councilman Coons has been very, um, focused library activity. What's the most significant thing that you would say that we changed or grew, grew or accomplished with our library over the last four or five years? Because I've not heard of anything, but then again, on my own admission, I've not been right before for a work in the library. So, help me out here, what, what, what have been the significant, the most significant change that we've had the last four or five years in the library to improve, uh, or services?
Programs, I think, for especially the younger patrons. I think it's something that's really improved and been much more noticed, so to speak, from the community as well. And just seeing the visitation by families, especially in the summers, past summer when I was there, was a somewhat...
Did that, did that come through the initiation of new programs?
Well, I think we find that those do, um, as far as the library staff, they tend to, whether it be technology or what the interests are of patrons, especially, you know, the younger families.
You guys are forward to them, gee?
I, I can only, I can only speak, so, you know, I've got my two boys, our daughter, so, uh, we spend a lot of time and we do spend a lot of time, uh, being involved in programming, but also, uh, CIO has programmed. Mountain Creek in Dallas has programmed, Soto has programmed, Lancaster has programmed. A- and, you know, what, from what we've seen, um, you know, if, if people have these options, right? And a lot of them choose even Dunkerville to go to other cities for their programming. And I'm not disagreeing, but like you said, I, I have seen improvement in our programming here, sure. Um, but as we're looking forward into the future, right? And, um, you know, we're always talking about being city champions and living top-notch in everything that we do and I think that the library is the same thing. And so, um, you know, there's, there are always opportunities to improve there. And, and programming isn't, you know, the program, program isn't about how much money you have. We've seen that, just a lot of that is being creative, uh, innovative, kind of thinking outside the box. And so, I think, again, I've been speaking with family of young kids, I can't speak for, we don't have teenagers and, you know, we don't have older people on them, but at least in that area, um, you know, there's some work that we can do to improve, for sure.
Well, you said something there that, um, what I thought I was hearing you say was it wasn't necessarily a, a money issue that was keeping that from holding us back, but, uh, but I'll ask that question anyway. The, the, do y'all feel that maybe we could be doing more program improvements or even doing better, um, with more funding for little programs? Or is it just, what, what's holding us back from really pushing, pushing us to the top quality in our programming and our, our overall library performance? What do you, what do you think is better? I got a real feeling.
So, uh, I went back and looked at the budget requests the last four years. And the budget requests, you know, so the biggest budget item to the library of the most departments is, right? And then, the library, the next thing is program. And for the last several years, that amount hasn't changed as far as what's being requested for, I, I don't know why. I'm always, uh, you know, thinking, now, the Cambridge Library brings a million dollar budget for program. We're not gonna prove it, but, you know, we, we, there's opportunities to kind of step it up little by little, but we've never, it's never even been brought to us, we're not talking. And so, again, I think that's kind of part of, okay, um, you know, how are we, you know, being more creative, more innovative? How are we thinking about what slight budget increases could do to improve our program? So, um, so, and I, you know, as far as how we can make improvements, I mean, I would personally would like to see the library come and say, hey, we want more money, and here's why. And sometimes those budget requests do improve, but they gotta ask.
No, if I just could, just for a second. I certainly can't speak for those that have happened in the past. It's entirely possible, I, I don't know, but it's very possible that a request was made by the library and now recommended by the city manager because you get the city manager to recommend the budget. And that's one of the things you'll be seeing as we go through this process, this, for this new fiscal year twenty-six. You'll see the requests in a different format that were not recommended for a previous. So I, I don't wanna completely say that that's only part of the library or library staff because it's entirely possible that the city manager may have said, no, and you might not have staff, so.
That is part of what, parents, I mean, involve, just vision? I mean, you're not gonna get something if you don't ask. You're not gonna get something if you don't think about it. You're not going to, you push the envelope sometimes, but it's... And, and I'm not one to make anybody mad, but I have a nice thing, you've gotta look outside the city sometimes to be able to realize that there's other things we do, this is successful elsewhere. And, and, and vision has not been a strong point, I'm sorry, it just hasn't been a strong point in Dunkerville for a long time. And, and, and it's, we're pretty soon to have arts, and that's the other part of the, really stress on this. If this becomes an art history, this library stands to become a huge part of that. I, I don't see, is literature arts?
Yes.
Does it not just go hand in hand?
Absolutely.
You know, I'm, I'm looking at, at faces and I, I feel like maybe you feel, uh, we don't understand how hard you work. And, and we do. I come from the world of what they do, outsourced, and that's what my company does. And a lot of times, uh, well, all the time, they bring us in because, uh, you know, we do know what's going on in, not in hospitals, in hospitals all around the world. And so, sometimes they know that they're spare, as you were saying, don't know, I'm, I'm going back to what you said about visionaries, and not saying anybody's not a visionary, but you already know what you know. And so, they bring us in because they, for us to help you get to the next level. And so, whether that's someone coming in, or wasn't, I mean, another, or whether it's a consultant coming in just to, you know, kind of jumpstart a brain or, or whether there's a resource that does just nothing but researching on what, you know, what's going on to help the library to get to that next level and sustain it. So, I just, I just wanted to share that.
I have some questions.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I knew this, my brain is... But, so, forgive me. But, my question is, before we bring in an outside source LSNS, have we exhausted all resources from in-house? I mean, have gone to like the Dallas Public Libraries and see what they're offering? Um, are we doing, I know, um, Dallas Public Libraries, they do an after-school snack for kids. So, right after school, kids come here to get a snack, it's an incentive to get in the library. Are we partnering with the schools? Because we can have all the program we want, but if we don't have the kids, that is program useless. So, how are we getting the word out there about these programs?
That would be a question.
It's funny you ask that because we've asked the same thing, what is...
I'm sorry.
No, 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 thank you for your input. Um, we've asked that, and as a matter of fact, in this last budget meeting where councilmember Coons were talking about the managers, pretty much stayed the same. Um, there was one number that was quoted as two hundred, um, that's programming and other items, and then it was two hundred and eighteen, then two hundred and eighteen. And so, it was just that now when we asked about the marketing, um, there's a kiosk, um, the one in front of the hall, then there's also that marquee that is on main. And so, every now and then during the summertime, I see something in the water view. But I haven't seen anything, um, other than that, but that's just my perspective.
What relationships are we building with, with the schools and with the daycare in that area? Because if you're not gonna be relational, then it's, it's really not gonna work because this is a relational community, so...
If I, if I can address that, maybe, so, you, that's exactly, I think, one of the things that I represent for the staff of the library, right? And let me share with you, and I thought it was a fantastic question to ask, is, is there more or less flexibility? I would think that with an entity like LSNS, it will at least give the directors some job rights and say, here's best practices and here's the best things to do and, and really to be able to build support and the connectivity. What I will share with you is, um, as city manager, I meet with every single one of the city managers in the West Southwest and councils, we say this a hundred times, I meet with them every single Monday morning at ten a.m. and we do a quarterly meeting because we're sharing information about what's happened in the previous week. It's building that rapport, it's building those connections, and then guess what? When we have a situation or we bump into, we already have that network, we already have that connection, we're able to remember each other and go with that information. Then we expand that further through something else, and since the Texas City Partners Association, the International City Manager Association, and we really build those groups. That was one of the things that I was seeing, that I wanted to see more of from the library is the connections with our other community organizations, but also the region. And really building that, because I wasn't receiving that coming from a higher library, and I think that that's really important. So I think you've really gotten a point, um, but I think that there was a little bit of, um, what I, I'm just gonna say, and I don't wanna get into the term details, but I would like to be more visioned for the library and what, what the future could be, that, and less complacency. And, um, and really, I think that's what you're also hearing from council, is they literally could see the same words copied and pasted from one budget here to the next, and there was some frustration there.
Yeah, and I'll go back and say the same thing. It, it's a very good question that you posed, um, but I think those relationships are built from the library side through contacting and reaching out to the council. We, we can mention things like this, but I think it's more suited to management and, uh, and the departments to reach out with those ideas to, to make an action. And I'm not sure that I've heard about those, that reaching out in the past. And I'm, I'm a little way back, I don't remember the connection with the, with the school district, for instance, in our library. Now, maybe I'm wrong, maybe there was some things that have been, but I've not heard about them, and I've been around for a while. So that's, it's a great question, but, um, I think the, the opportunity, if we choose to go with, um, LSNS or somebody like that, is, is that I think that does screw up, um, the staff and the directors to focus on those things because they're, they're, they're managing, you focus, and, and those ideas that maybe it's happened, I, for so long, can start to, start them forward. That's, that's what I think I'm hearing, and again, I say it from, uh, an embarrassing, um, lack of knowledge about the library performance over the past, um, six, four or five years. I, I've heard from, uh, some board members, uh, past and present, heard some, uh, handful of friends of the library and library patrons, some things that, that led me to believe that things were a little stagnant. And, uh, that, that, that when this option came up, I personally thought, well, maybe, maybe we need to find a way to, uh, to reset and, and get everybody in a more positive direction to go into these, uh, explore these other ideas and opportunities. I think that you probably are just loaded with ideas and, and ready to... Now, now is a great opportunity, especially since we're meeting together to hear more people about some of those things that have been, maybe, uh... And I wanna go back a little bit about, about, um, the, uh, budget request. I'm related to what we're talking about right now, but, uh, I'm retired from, from, um, the city of Dunkerville. And I used to watch as we lined up to go in and do our budgets, and, uh, it was pretty serious. So we'd watch the person that just came out and see what, what number of things was... Okay, maybe I'm not gonna ask for someone, but, but there were always departments, and I see it now as, as an elected official, there's always departments that stay conservative about it, they don't rule out the vote. And, and I know in our hearts, they wanna ask for more, but they instinctively don't. And it's, uh, it, it's not a good thing, not a bad thing, but I think folks said, you know, if you don't ask, if you don't reach it out there and ask, you may miss an opportunity that will allow another program, another idea to go forward. And so that's something that I will always encourage, uh, keep it, it is considered. All, all, all we can say is no, and, uh, it's not always that easy.
Is anyone, uh, done like a survey, what are the other local libraries, what is Cedar Hill, Soto, what are they thinking? Is there some sort of consumer reports? I've never heard of this company before. Is there some sort of consumer boards that, that's what kind of a rating they have or...
I've, I've not heard of any, I mean, there's a number of these, these types of groups out there. But there are many, many services, there's groups that, that do these types of things, but, and as far as, um, of, of ages, it's my thing. The best I've heard is that we actually have elected officials that have gone on the tours and talked to the, the staff members in the library. And in Mr. Coon's case, he actually reached out on, on phone. Right now, that's about the best we can do is, is examine from their, their history and the cities. I mean, we all know when we see these cities that are posted up there, we know which are, are, and it's not to say some cities aren't, but there are some premier cities that are more progressive cities. And when you see them up there, it always impresses me because of certain cities that are up there and they're doing it, I have to think they have the resources and, and to really deep, do a deep dive into these. They may have more, um, resources to investigate than we do. And so, we'll see them any time, and how long they've been with them, it means something to me. And that's just the way I view things sometimes, but, uh, it'd be interesting to find out, but I, I don't know many, many, um, city managers out.
Exactly, we should. They did win the twenty twenty-four Modern Library Awards for Service of the Year, whatever that means. That's our website. I'm a great manager.
Ten-year contract, that'd be easy, that, that can say that. So, if someone told they knew a ten-year contract, that says a lot.
Yeah, so there, there's some, I mean, there's some being said about the information that we can always double check the information they give us. And, uh, and it seems to be a reputable and solid company. Uh, another question?
It's just a comment on that. On a brief Google search, I only saw about three, um, management-style companies like this when I was trying to see if there was any alternative, if you wanted to do, I had to go through, you know, a process for this. Most of them, when you put in a, you know, hot systems and things like that, um, it's library systems, it's the different data base companies, things like that. And also, I've been familiar with managed companies that send out temporary employees, um, more for specific jobs of cataloging, catalog books, or other kinds of, of things, or substitute employees for, um, which probably is... Not too many of them, I don't think.
Is, I, I'm not a friend of, I'm just, it's, uh, there's not the idea of someone with relationships, making money with, per se, a plus, a huge plus? I mean, they're going about forty, fifty percent off things. I don't know if you, but I think fifty percent, or forty percent off anything. And we said, getting more expenses as time goes on, it's not going yet, whatever. Uh, they also seem to have the pulse of what is successful in other libraries. And that is something that I think internally that can be hard to do sometimes. Um, I, and if I'm wrong, just to tell the flat, I think the purchasing power and, and, and just this idea that they're, as I said, they're, they're on the bleeding edge of stuff. I think nothing's good for a library that I think we all will see improve. I get some experienced employees, I can understand that completely. Uh, and he can say what he wants to, but, uh... I get some experienced employees, I can understand that completely, uh, and he can say what he wants to, but, uh, I mean, I recognize libraries that were up there and I've tried to do a little research on stuff, and I I think similarly you're going to have to do something like this. Uh, doing it internally, very, very difficult, uh, consortiums are are common, uh, this this interview, uh.
This one way. Oh, um, the courtesy power, the the some of the library uses the state contracts that have the that the state makes for the public libraries, and that does give like a forty seven point five percent discount or whatever, so so the forty percent number is actually.
I'd like to say something else you said. They went into some library that had, uh, a huge percentage of their materials hadn't been checked out in two years. That happens all the time. Those were being called. They're, if they're not being checked out, they are being called. And I know because I texted for for the book sale, and then I see, oh, okay, I see what they have amazing. So I just wanted to say that that kind of circle a little more.
Well, another good question, um, how how do we manage that and establish what books are not not being?
Oh, they they do it here.
No, well, they'll talk about our current library process is doing, yeah.
Much time that take on the staff to do that themselves compared to like with their computer system where it just generates it with their software. Where, I mean, I don't know how our library does that.
I would think that their system would allow you to do the reports that would tell you what hadn't been checked out this period of time. That's a common.
Yes, yes, our library system, we can see what's been checked out, what's checked out, how often it's been checked out, how long ago we got it. And we apparently run reports on those materials and we can see what's not checking out, um, or what might be is checking out, but it's fifteen years old and updated now and we're going to replace it with something new, and that whole thing gets checked out instead of the, yeah, that is part of the regular collection management process of the library, and I don't know that I can quantify how much time that takes, just because it's it's part of the kind of the data duties. Um, but that is the process that we do, um, and our and our library system gives us some of that data to make those decisions. I can't speak to the library, you might have to think about it.
But running report is the easy part. Physically going out there, deaccessioning those books out of your catalog, and getting them to the point of being available for sale is a very hard intensive job that you need staff for, and you, they're probably not going to be the public service people who are doing the threat.
City manager, who who fully staffed the library right now?
Well, so, uh, Sheriff, you, uh, did your last day with us, it was January twenty fourth. Um, he'll be retiring, and then, so obviously one vacancy in the library position, which is certainly a a key position. Um, and then, and do you know off the top of your head if there's any other, uh, positions that are currently vacant?
Ms. Coon? You let her go first, right?
I got a lot to say, so I mean, that's.
The current staff that we that we've had, is it sufficient to take care of the customer, the customer base that we currently have?
So, I think that's a difficult question to answer, and I think that, can we just say at this point, to be determined? Because I think I even asked some questions of, um, the director that I would like some other comparisons and benchmarks that I was not provided. So we'll just say that's something you need to figure out.
And if that's the case, I think for answers, I see that, if that's the case, we're, have an option if chosen to go with us. And we're now, um, in a position where we have more to be able to bring over. And, um, as they do their, uh, assessment to see that additional employees are needed. Um, that would be something that could be fully made from the city and elements that possibly deal with gaps that are identified in the process. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, so the current, so, let me carefully answer this. So the process, from what I understand, that was happening is a lot of our departments were going out and soliciting the request for people to apply for position, rehandling that within their department. That is something that we've recently changed where H R is handling that. So we have trained certified H R professionals, and so now, when there's a vacancy, the department is talking to H R is managing that process. H R is then actually putting out that, you know, we have this vacancy and receiving, doing a preliminary review to make sure that they meet the minimum qualifications, and then just giving them interviews in the department. So to answer your question, if hypothetically we were going to add five additional positions, and remains a department of the city without LSNS, yes, I would direct that all of that stuff be run through H R.
So, you know, I know we're talking a lot about what's happening right now, but again, back to our vision, and, you know, what purpose is a library served, you know, generally speaking, so libraries, uh, information centers, right? So it's place to get information, and yes, I was in print books, obviously that's, we've got these things now, we've got these things. Um, and so obviously, you know, that that's changing how we access information. And then public spaces, right? So the library, there's one place I can walk in, I can walk back, and I can pick up, and I can read them, and it doesn't cost me anything, so this is one place, public spaces. So this is a, you know, also serves as a community hub, and so, you know, are are we able to, sort of looking forward, and I know they're talking about, they they know what's going on in in the industry, world world of libraries. And, uh, Google search is something, but we're not always on top of those. V R technologies, uh, A I, you know, you know, we started talking about, you know, A I, so these kinds of things are coming that are inevitable. And as our as our staff, are they, are they trained, are they able to keep up with the changing technologies, evolving technologies? Um, and to be able to work with those things, to make the library, uh, better. Again, you know, so we've got, you know, this, you know, deal here that was presented to us, um, you know, what what can we do right now and starts to move toward whatever that vision is not, again, I've never had a conversation about this. And again, I know we're talking about right now, but we've got a comprehensive plan that we're talking, what is going to go with like in twenty fifty? And what does our library look like in fifty? And if we continue business as usual, uh, we may not have a library, because a lot, uh, and so, uh, yeah. We want to have a library, and I think, as Mr. Graham said, and this, I know some, I think, when he said something that said one city, they made their library a community center. And so that that was a hub of community, what a great idea. Um, but that's something we've got to envision and see, and again, you know, if we're doing that business as usual, and we're thinking the same way, and I know a lot of times in, uh, library meetings, you know, an idea was presented or something was presented, and the response was, well, we've tried that, we've done that before, okay, well, let's try something else. But we have to to move, uh, and I want to say this, this is a statement, so, uh, for the library board, so you all, so we've been appointed, uh, you all, and you are an advisory board to us, and for the last, and most of you are new, um, for the last several years since I've been on, I think you've ever received, um, any kind of recommendation from the library board, and that's not on the board itself. I'm just saying that now we're we're starting to rebuild this relationship, right? You guys come up with some ideas, and I know the community's presenting things to you, I mean, discuss these things, and it's your board. And so, uh, you know, y'all come to us and say, hey, we we have these recommendations, we advise you do this, this, or this. Um, and we just had that survey, and that survey, I think it was over, you know, four hundred and fifty people, I can't remember, tremendous feedback from that survey data, four hundred and fourteen responses. So, um, you know, go through that and look at that, you know, I mean, I know it highlights, but, you know, y'all can look at them and come up with some recommendations for us. Uh, what what we can do with that data to the library, but, I mean, we we have to look forward because, I mean, they're just, libraries are changing again. Whether we like it or not, we have to adapt to that.
Well, it just seems like with a change in leadership, this is an opportunity to hire a visionary person.
That would be my question, with, as you said, the current director there on stage is doing it for. So going forward, how much of the changes that we were looking for is going to be changed with the new director? You know, and then also going back to what you were saying, was that some libraries are the community center. Here, the library has a great opportunity because the recreation center is right there, kids are in there all the time playing basketball. But yet to come to the library, you have to go outside, because you can't go through those double doors. So literally, you're making it harder for the community that is already in the building to get to the library. So even these little adjustments like that is going to open up the library so much more.
Well, be careful what you wish for. That door system was put in place because of, um, the, uh, the crossover traffic was, and you could help them for the library, and the peaceful setting and and the shenanigans, you know, once the people come in the library, coming in there for a library business, um, somebody comes from rec center that's just got their blood on them, all around, and not necessarily comes over for the same reason. So it was a control measure of sorts because of the recognition that, um, that, uh, the way it was set up originally. I think they even had to change the door swing to accommodate that need. So they had to take those for some people, but it served for reading. Maybe something could be looked at again and and see if it could be more suitable, um, tested. Um, one of the, one of the things that I that I've heard, I've I've shared with a few people, and then, but I hear you, is that the feeling that we've somewhat stagnated on a movement forward. And, and I have in my mind is, have we have we reached the point where we're behind enough that while we go through the process of interviewing and hiring, uh, the next director, um, are we are we far enough behind that better solution than look at a company like LSNS and say, you know, they can get us there quicker? And, you know, they can get us, uh, they can go through the interview process. When I was, uh, I had an opportunity in short stint as interim city manager back in two thousand thirteen, and, um, right after I got that position, temporary position, a long time librarian, good friend of mine, came into the office and said, look, it's got nothing to do with you, but I'm out here, uh, I'm a twenty seven year, twenty nine year librarian, and I'm stuck with, what do I know if I'm a librarian? How how long is this going to take? It only going to be here a short while. How long can can the system survive without the library placed? Fortunately, there was somebody at hand that was, uh, was very qualified for the position at that time, so I didn't have to do the deep dive. But while we're looking for that person, um, and interviewing, that's a long process. And have we stagnated long enough? Have we? And from some remarks that I, and some of the remarks that I've received personally, going back to like we had a joint meeting, uh, a member said they might not be beyond very long, on the board very long, because, um, they didn't feel they were being valued, the ideas, some, I've mentioned something like that tonight. And I I don't want, I don't want to be grudges too much, I'm saying, have we got ourselves in this situation with a better solution? Not the easier solution, but the better solution, uh, is to look more seriously at a team like this to come in. I I think in a way it's it's freeing, um, to, and being a former city employee, I don't know how I would help about that. I don't think I would have been scared or nervous if that had fallen upon me, um, so I get that. So I don't want to be flippant about what I'm saying, but I think, uh, I think the reason for us to think about it, I don't think our minds are made up. That's what we're here tonight, and y'all brought up some really valid points, so, Ms. Ed.
Okay, so you you use the word stagnant a few times, and I agree with that word, um, and I'll tell you why. Is my kids are ten and seven, and many of the programs are identical to when my children were fathers. You know, it's sad, it's love that my kids love their fathers, I'm sure the next generation of fathers loves it, but for those children, they kind of age out of those programs, and then there's nowhere for them to go. I mean, as I think for, you know, tweens, you know, that's where they're at right now, and when I say stagnant, I mean it because nothing changed. All of a sudden, the library's got the library of things, they've got a chess club happening, there's a lot of things happening, and I like them all. You know, I'm in favor of them all, they work hard for it, but none of that came out until L S N S came into play. So there's something that went on with that, and I think, you know, I personally am in favor of the firm. You know, your minds aren't made up, but that's my opinion.
So I'm just a citizen, I'm thrilled, so I don't know if I'm allowed to speak now.
We're all British, don't we?
Well, you have a comment covered. You know, just in reference to this and what what some other people have said, I wonder if the library staff had been, and and I didn't know about the director leaving and all that, but I wonder if maybe the part of it, there hasn't been good communication all along. So the city wasn't communicating, the library advisory board wasn't communicating, maybe the staff's directorship, I don't know, I'm not accusing, wasn't communicating. And it seems to me like the fact that they doubled up and said, yeah, we didn't make changes, we didn't realize what kind of changes people wanted, shows to me at least that they are responsive, that they can make that, that they can make changes, but they need to know, you know, and and it just feels to me like a lot of work with people haven't been talking, and so I kind of feel bad for the staff. You know, it's not like they're blaming them, but I do feel, you know, if I were still.
I don't know if there's any sentiment among the council or management, that that staff.
I'm not saying you're blaming them, but I'm just saying that that I think they could be more responsive if there is more communication, more, what is the vision? Do they, the library is, yeah, yeah, the library is, you know, like, has the city really made it clear what the vision for the library is? Has the library advisory board really done that, that interaction? I don't know, I'm just saying.
Well, I'm going to tell you, possibly not, possibly not, but, you know, we've got, um, twenty twenty five, I'm not going to refer to the city manager as new anymore. But he, um, he he walked into a situation citywide, I forget just the library, I mean, citywide. We had, um, and I want to be very careful too, using his words, um, we we have, um, this year, this past year, it's something I haven't seen. I was employed for thirty years, hadn't seen anything like it, actually the last two or three years or more. Um, and and he's had to come in and and manage all that, learn it, and then manage, learn through the, learn through the department's work, learn all of that. And at some point, you've got to decide, make a decision. And one of the things that good city managers are really good at, and I've seen a lot, I've worked with a lot of good ones, um, is they're very good at, they get educated guesses, and they run about a ninety eight percent success rate at that. And so when you when you have, uh, you know, just under a year to evaluate all this, and then you have to make a decision. You have to start looking at options and making decisions. In this case, he shared this this decision that that we're considering with the council. And then on top of that, we have the benefit now sitting down for. And then on top of that, we have the benefit now sitting down for a couple hours with y'all and listening to what you're saying. And that's important too, that we hear from everybody, that we understand, and we've heard a part about, about the employees. And as a former employee, I, I would have some apprehension too, and I think I would feel that what's going on, and, and I, I don't think that's a wrong feeling to have. It's just, we can air out a lot of things, and you saw a presentation tonight that gives a little bit of an idea. Some of you may have sat through the presentation before, but it gives you an idea of what, what kind of opportunity might be there with this, with this direction as opposed to weighing out a long period of time and paying to interview for the new director. Yes, sir.
I want to be careful how I say this. Really being on communication transparency. I'm sure the city manager, I almost beat him, but it's been here four years, has had time to assess everything and start opening up the lines of communication with directors, where they're able to provide feedback, input, whatever you want to call it, ask, or how we can improve. I know that I've had one-on-one conversations with them every month, and one thing that we do talk about is how the staff is working to make the improvements that are needed. There is just one area that has been at least stagnant, and as a city board, I don't take this decision lightly because I wouldn't want anybody just to contract out my position, and now I'm left. So, I get the impact that it will have. But we have the friends of the library, we have some library board, there's community members, have reached out to me personally to offer suggestions, say that they have had those communications, say that they have voiced these concerns, and nothing has been done. We have a report here that shows from twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, things have been suggested, things have been purchased. We haven't seen them until January of twenty twenty-five. So, I'm struggling with lack of communication. I want to see the improvement, and I want to help us get there, whatever that looks like. I'm not saying, I don't want to throw anybody or beat anybody up tonight, that's the goal. The goal is to find a solution. And I can't ignore what has happened since twenty seventeen. That's kind of our need. Like, that's just my personal belief.
Yes, sir.
I was just going to point something, as far as the staff, when, when companies do have sort of kind of rebuild our vision, it's a big chore. So, it sounds like, you know, we keep saying staff, they're simply not looking to replace people, like they're saying they want people to, you know, stay on, and they are a management company, they are a staffing company. So, I'm saying, it'll cost them to try to keep staff that work for the city, but that's for changes. They no longer get, they're W two's or whatever, don't say City of Duncanville, they say whatever name the company is, but as far as what they think of everything else, you know, the benefits of, and, and like I said, I'm, I'm thinking from experience, and another thing too, the transition, it has to be seamless, otherwise we fail with these, you know? So, they're, that's what, I can't be for them, but I'm saying, I, I know from experience, I've had to make tran, transitions that are seamless just to keep unity in the community. Because the community, it shouldn't look any different to them, or they didn't do their job.
Yes, sir.
So, to the point of communication, I have a target on my back because starting in twenty twenty-two, I started speaking with my name and my address at the city council, sending emails to the library director, assistant library director, and to the associated city staff, saying what I had been seeing up close and personal, and that is lack, forget COVID, forget COVID, a lack of commit, lack of programming, lack of vision, lack of energy, walk into the library and the ennui just slaps you in the face. And what really started my more frequent emails and public speaking is when I realized after COVID, when the library reopened, that they were working, the library was open two hours a week, fewer hours, that's eight hours a month, fewer hours. And I asked about that, and evidently that was discussed at some library advisory board meeting, but the minutes could never improve, could never be offered, and I just asked point blank, what about reinstating to our former hours of service since staff was never adjusted with the fewer hours? And I can show you the email. The library director said that at the current lower level of hours per week, per month, that the city of Duncanville's public library meets the state of Texas standards.
Yes, if, if I could just talk about staff for a second. So, please know that I truly believe the overwhelming majority of the Duncanville city staff, including the library staff, truly care about it, and I think we've all said that tonight, I don't think anybody said it been different, and that they want what's best, and they put a lot of hours in, they put a lot of time in, including the library staff, that they really want to see a new and improved vision. I don't want to talk about the employment history to an individual because that is reserved for executive session, but what I look to do is, I started this city of Duncanville in January of twenty twenty-fourth. I immediately, that same week, not only met with every single council member, not with every single director, I continued, we have weekly meetings with every single director of every single department, either myself or one of the assistant city managers, and then I meet monthly with every single director. On top of that, every single Monday at two thirty, we have an executive team meeting that includes the library director and the assistant director. So, there is a communication coming and expectations, and I will share with you, one of my first frustrations is in February twenty twenty-four, I was having conversations about using the library for displaying art, and here we are a year later, still having the same conversation. That is frustrating. And so, there are things that would have should have would have, but again, I'm not trying to blame anybody, we're just talking about the vision forward. The council member, I am so glad you brought up the comprehensive plan. And both Hannah and Kevin were in a meeting, the executive team meeting on Monday, and heard the granting array about how important the comprehensive plan is, and I describe it as the tip of the sword, right? Because we need to hear from the community, but the community wants to go twenty forty to look, because that's going to drive every other decision that we make, whether it's zoning, whether it's entrances, whether it's even, giving example, if the community, and it's just part one example, but if the community wants high rises of a hundred-foot story buildings, then I gotta do different with the fire department, right? Every single decision we make is based on that comprehensive plan. And so, that is so critically important for the future of the community and where we're going to the future. So, I'm also going to pull a plug in, if you haven't pulled out the survey too, so it's critically important, we need that information, but that really does help drive every decision that we're making, including here. So, you know, I, I completely understand, and some staff members may feel like, maybe they weren't getting enough communication, and, you know, we can do better with that, but I can share with you that every single director gets extensive communication coming directly from the assistant city managers about what we expect.
I have a question.
Just give me one second, just a minute, you have to dig out your.
Uh, yes.
Excuse me, but this may not have been asked the answer. Has anybody on city staff or library staff tried to interface with the other cities in the best southwest to see what programs, cause they have everything that we haven't that might be successful here? I have a friend I've known since grade school, which has been a minute or two, who sings the praises of the library at Cedar Hill, even though he lives in Duncanville. He loves going there, he can research, he writes books, his latest is about chicken fried steak, so, and that's a winner for me. But he sings the praises of what all he can do, how we can work at the library at Cedar Hill. And I just, it seemed simple to me, has anybody on staff visited Cedar Hill Library, or the Sola Library, or the Dallas Library up on Wheatland, to see if there's something we could do to differ?
No, great question, and I can tell you, I, and I know Hannah, as in others, have visited a series of those libraries. Could there be better collaboration? We absolutely could always do better collaboration, right? But I know that they, they can handle those various libraries that you mentioned.
Okay, we got one, well, a couple more questions, and it's, what time we have now? We're around looking.
You say until midnight, I don't know.
Is there any way you can put this new company on a trial period to see if this is a good fit? In other words, someone with the expert eyeballs develop what's good practices and what isn't? And if there, is there a backdoor if it's not a good fit?
Well, there is a backdoor, the city manager's playing with that. Um, yes, so we have more options. What I would say, almost on a trial type basis, and I, I don't want to get into all the particulars of some of the discussions relative to contract or possibly employing people, but there is always a clause in every single contract we execute. And, and honestly, I would say that they probably floated a trial, a ten-year contract, and that may or may not be what ends up being the document that eventually gets executed, right? And we have standout clauses in every contract that I sign on behalf of the city, so, yes, standing.
Okay, but there's no financial penalty on us if we bail?
There, there's a couple of different options that have limited to non-financial impact.
Mr. Commissioner?
So, since Wayne brought this up, so I'll go ahead and add to that, because he mentioned some of the compliments that people pay to Cedar Hill Library, and there's something else I hear a lot from citizens, it's just a feeling, it seems like people have said, Cedar Hill Library is a library killer, because if we're already shared catalog, well, like them here, we can go five minutes down the road, and, you know, some of the discussions were, well, we, we don't have that here, but they have the Cedar Hill people, and enjoy that program in there. And, and you know, frankly, for me, I don't know if I had it built up in my mind, but it really didn't, it wasn't what I expected, you know? It wasn't blown away like so many people were, but there are some, I mean, there is a sentiment, there is a sentiment though in the community that, you know, they have that wonderful new library, right? So, what do we have? And my, my response to that is, well, when we, again, look at whatever our business for this library, and we have these kinds of meetings, and we talk about what this can be, that this, it will be special and unique, and we'll have things that you can't get anywhere else because it's born here in Duncanville. But that's again why these discussions are so important. I was going to, so now, I'll, I'll say this, I'm speaking for my colleagues on the council, but I am speaking for myself, I do believe I'm speaking for the rest of the council, is that whatever decision we made, we have made decisions, whatever decision that is, I'm telling you that no one here wants that decision to have any kind of negative impact on the current employees. Whatever that decision is, I mean, I, again, I, I'm trying to speak for everyone else here, but no one, I mean, we love our employees' decision, and so, one, we definitely wouldn't do something that we thought would have a negative impact on them. But if it appears after we look at our options, that there's something that we really believe would improve the libraries, I mean, that's something we need to consider, is that maybe this might be something that's good for the library, that, that could be a possibility. And we, you know, collectively, when we make a decision, if we see that, then, you know, we want it on this one, then it's the library, not just the library, but the whole community. And so, you know, I just want to make sure that that's been said. And just the last thing is that, we, we've lived here, my family's lived here about six or seven years, and, you know, I, I can just, there, there's a change that's happening in Duncanville, right? And it's not really change that we're making, you know, we're going to create it for. You're going to see on all our campaign materials, we did it, but we didn't do any of it, it's, it's happening, it's, it's happened, it's organic. And, and the fact that Mr. Fincher, I mean, this is something, I mean, he wasn't here a year ago, he just got here, and, and the year before that, what are you thinking about? But now he's here, I'm glad he's here. And so, you know, this is something, here's an opportunity that's come, and, you know, it's something again, that while all these changes are happening in the city, economic development, the changes happening with, all these changes, you know, I, I want the library to be a part of that, that change, because all the changes we're seeing are good, and so, here's an opportunity for, for change, improvement, evolution, use that word, and I believe the library should be a part of that, that change. I don't want the library to get left behind, while all these new things, great things happening. And there's a lot of low hanging fruit here, so, again, as I say, for what I'd love if you guys met with the Arts Commission, or met with some members of the commission, and started talking about how we can start putting art on the walls, low hanging fruit. We've had the facility needs assessment, you know, I, I don't know how much money it would cost to rearrange things, you know, to move some shelves around, and we don't need LSNS for that by the way, but, you know, to move things around, to, to move the children's area back in the back where the kids can be kids and not have to get shut all the time up here in the front. And so, I mean, there's a lot of hanging fruit that we can start doing now, it doesn't necessarily require help of third party, but again, if they can help us, then we want that help if they want us.
Mr. Commissioner?
Thank you, Eric. I, I want to make something, really kind of make an extension, because I get it's gotten a little bit blurred a little bit, root policy makers on this side, seeing the staff of operations. So, suggestions come from you, does it come from our friends, does it come, that's where this grassroots effort is, and that's why you're hearing encouragement or support to, to do that. Ultimately, city staff is going to come and bring us some kind of recommendation, and that's where we have to make our decision, but it's got to be the most informed decision or we have the most information. I'm not saying it is that, you know, you're trying to advocate for, for your area or position, then you do need to go up there, okay? I don't care if it's public, because it works, or the library, or something, reach up, but, but yes, we are limited in funds, so that'll play the issue, but it's going to come from the scratch groups, and we're, we're just ultimately the ones that are going to say yay or no.
Thank you.
I want to jump on Mr. City Manager's comment about the national plan of verbal. The survey's online, on the city website, shared online with everybody. I'm doing it, I'm probably annoying all my friends and everybody, but we need that, we need all the input we can get on that. Mr. Fuchs's comments about, we don't want, whatever this decision is, to have an adverse impact, we, we want to empower what you did, we want this to be empowered through the staff, the library board, the friends of the library, and to me, LSNS is tangible and it's quantifiable the impact it would have to a degree. I think we're looking at, who else would be saving the beer, which gives you a carpet, but you need to ask for more money.
I have one question. We are ten days away from our director at the library not, no longer being here, but yet they're signing a job opening on the city website for that position, so how are we even aiming for that position that we know is about to be open?
City Manager?
The library director is solely a city manager appointment. So, trust me, having all kinds of different conversations, there will be some sort of an interim placement as we figure out everything. Obviously, when Obviously, once we get to a point where we're talking about the long-term solution, then I certainly will have HR reach out and we'll have some representatives of different groups that will be able to be part in that. But, but right now, it's a decision that I will make.
Yeah, sure. You've been quiet. First time speaking in one of these meetings or attending actually. I don't know if you can still get out, I'm, I'm not a employee, but, or I don't do, I don't have a lot of involvement with the library other than I volunteer every Wednesday night as a tech tutor. So, but good presentation that he gave from the press, not reflexively against this sort of thing. But I've been sitting here doing some Googling and, you know, it's not hard to look up their name and look up Red and look up Glass Door, Indeed, all these different sites. You can see there's a lot of negativity out there and I wonder if anybody's read the existence of others. There's positivity out there too, so sometimes the negativity kind of washes over the positivity. So I just want to make sure that, that those making a decision have done due diligence and looked at all the, you know, comments that are put out there. Like Escondido library has a lot of negative things to say about the profit that they take is about 23%. And then the 10% for venture capital company that owns them. So there's, and the staff ended up being paid less over time, so it was kind of a bait and switch where they were led that they were going to get the same benefits time they, they got reduced. So I just want to make sure all of that's in perspective before we begin to. One second, another question. I did, I sort of did, filled out a form a year ago. We talked about arguing, I think about how frustrated some of these other people may be here, but you're frustrated after a year. Somebody's supposed to have been dealing with this stuff a long time. Myself included, as you well know. Something is broken down somewhere and if it doesn't get fixed, this takes a lot of trouble. So the communication has got to change. And I, I built for, sounds like an experiment based on, in the library. But what's happening isn't working and if communication isn't working, some discussions need to be had here if you're frustrated about it.
We were talking about vision and calling for the citizens and library advisory board. I said, hey, what if you want some vision and you can split individuals to members of the staff, you want their first great ideas?
I'll put for the city manager. Make it a note of that. You gonna close this out?
Well, my life. My, my, because I didn't say I promise. Last, I, I didn't want to respond because I did see a lot of that, some of that material as well. You know, some of the, the language and just some of the things that I saw, and there is, yeah, if you go online, I mean, you Google search, you'll find some negative comments, some posts on different sites. You know, I can say, you know, one, as a local rep, so I'm sure my colleagues here can say that, you know, we go to meetings, five, six hours on some weeks, you know, we're in, you know, 10, 12 hours of meetings a week. We're doing, a lot of things happening. But not, we're not, not fishing for out-of-boys or anything, but, you know, nobody knows, right? And we're doing all that work and the city manager, I mean, he looks tired, but he is tired. And, you know, so he's, he's been at work all many hours today. But, you know, a lot of times what happens is, you know, if there is one mistake or if, you know, we have to work hard not to make anybody mad. Because if there is one mess-up, not on social media abroad, you know, you can't believe this person did this, this and this. And also we've got, you know, 50 people at the council meeting for, for one mistake, right? The rest of the time, things are going really well. And we do it because we enjoy it, we're servicing the community. But they're, you know, they're an organization, they're a project, but we can't get past the fact that, yes, they make money from what they're doing. They want to have a good business. And, and, you know, some of what, what I saw looked like somebody had a, and all of a sudden, let me get as many people as I can to speak negatively about this company. But again, you don't hear a lot of the praise because people are happy, people typically don't say as much. Right, or good things are happening. And so, I mean, I would say, you know, take that into consideration because I, you know, I, I was kind of shocked, you know, a few things I saw. And then when I kind of did a little bit of digging, it seemed like, okay, maybe that was a mistake the company made, but also it could be that this is something that was maybe exaggerated because someone didn't like one situation. It doesn't reflect the company as a whole.
Well, I'm going, yeah, we'll let you be the last.
I just wanted to say thank you to the council and to the advisory board and for this open meeting.
Well, I too want to thank everybody this evening. It's often we get, we spent a lot of time tonight, but it's been worth it. A lot of practice time, and I'll point out and I'll do that. So I hope that for those who do that, I don't complain tomorrow morning about all that. Yeah, compare the council meeting, it's good. But no, but this is so important to us. And if it wasn't, we wouldn't still be here. But we, each one of us has, has a commitment that we made to not only go on the dais and make our decisions that we make, but to do a deeper dive like we have tonight. This is probably the most in-depth discussion that I've had with, with the board and the friends and the citizens, the patrons. So it's been, it's been invaluable to all of us in one way or another. We've got a lot of good feedback. We've got a lot more awareness now of what's coming from the other side. So as we go into further discussions, each one of us can look this home with us and, and understand a little bit better about what we think the overall library needs are to make it the top library. So people aren't talking about Cedar Hill. I have heard, I have heard a lot of positive, some people that went to Cedar Hill still come back to Duncanville. So that, that's a good, so all people that positive enough, which quite predates we go to the board.
Anyone else?
I feel a little more secure now. We got a lot of foxes walking in our house, that's all. A little more secure.
Get out of your chicken chat.
Does, does the council have anything direction from you at this point? Or any questions for LSNS and the other boards, I think I should mention it forward.
Well, I, I don't, I don't know that we necessarily need to bring back in. I appreciate their patience and waiting out there, but I, I suspect they've been through this process before.
There was a suggestion to meet with the staff and ask about vision for the library. And if that's something that the council would agree that we follow the rule on.
I don't know, I don't have a problem.
The council wants to meet with staff?
No, 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 no. If the council would agree to direct the city manager and to get direction, I mean, to get vision from, that's what.
We're working on that.
We're not cross.
I can try and accept the request.
For the record.
All right, so 9:16. What? One more?
Because since you asked. So we have a lot of planning documents in the queue, right? So somewhere eventually online, I'm sure we'll have some kind of strategic planning document for the library. Something like a wood request, at some point we have some discussion about, you know, something like that.
Okay, well, again, thank you all tonight so much from the council. We appreciate your time and everything that you do and your interest in our city. And come to council meetings. Can I close it out?
Yes, 9:16, sing over the business of the library advisory board. Do we have a board adjournment? Cindy, second? Thank you, okay. Brian? All right, sing that, all the favor of adjournment, so, okay, someone adjourned.
All right, I love your standing there for the side of the jury on behalf of the council.